Ladies and gentlemen, if you're watching live, we're having just a smidge of technical difficulty, and we will get started just as soon as we get that resolved. Thank you. Testing. We are going to call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will go to our moment of inspiration in Julie French.
Okay. All right. I will say this has been one remarkable year. Would you all agree? Pretty bad, huh? I know there are a lot out there right now counting down the days to the end of the school year, and I believe if we're counting correctly, it's seven. Am I right? Okay, you've all heard the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," right? I've said that. I have to say that we really needed a village this year. It was a tough year. What I do know is that this year, our community came together, not just our district, but our community, our health departments, our first responders, our teachers, support staff, custodians, maintenance people, school nurses, SROs and SSOs, our friends from Chartwell's, our volunteers at Sunny Day and Morehead Community Resource Center, our school district administrators and our school board, and so many more that I'm probably missing out on including in that number. But most importantly, our caregivers of our students, our parents, our grandmas and grandpas and those taking care of our students at home, each doing what they do best to get our most vulnerable, our children, as well as everyone else through what has been probably the most, one of the longest years in our children's young lives and in our lives as well. We're not done yet. We must stay vigilant because we're not through this yet. But with it being May and the end of the school year, I wanted to say job well done. And who better to say it with than through our children? So if this works right, I have a little video for you. Oh, I think this is it right here. Share. Oh, wait a minute here. I gotta turn my speaker on on here real quick. Okay. You can see it.
That says.
I hope you heard that. I don't know if you did or not, but I just think our teachers, our staff have been doing a remarkable job this year. And I just think we need to let you all go home and get some rest in seven days, except for those who are doing summer school for us. We appreciate you coming back and helping us with that. But you guys have done an amazing job, and it's been a tough year. You hear about learning loss and everything, but these kids are resilient, and they have pushed through, and they will be fine because you are there building relationships with them, which is what they need. So thank you for everything you've done for them. I did. Where's my unchair button at? Oh. Sorry about that. Start it again.
So with that. Sorry. We will be moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Burke, Board members and community. For my report tonight, I did list, it's been a busy month since our last board meeting, but the way I would describe it is it's a good, tired, a lot of good work being done throughout the district. And Julie, I echo all of your comments. That was a nice video and very appropriate for the school year. I want to go straight to my spotlights. I want to give a shout out to the high school. I attended the senior top 30 banquet this year, and that got reinvented a little bit. And same tradition of our students kind of creating a video message and selecting a teacher that impacted them throughout their educational career. I've attended that program a few times, and I'm always impressed by our students. I'm always impressed by our staff that impact them. This year, one of the seniors selected her first-rate teacher. And I think sometimes our elementary teachers don't get that recognition. We also had coaches. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Jarrett, who helps us behind the scenes with everything. Mr. Jarrett was selected by one of his students. I'm having an impact. So great job, high school, and all of the teachers that were a part of that. As you know, we've been putting out a lot of survey data or surveys this year. I'm not going to share the specific results with that survey, but I do want to give a shout out to Janine Templeman and all of our principals. Our communication data came back 5% higher than it did in the fall. We had 1,000 respondents this time and 740, I think, the first time. So even with more respondents and a 5% increase, we're working really hard to get that message out to our families and our staff. So nice job, Janine, on that and to all of our principals and those that are communicating. Board, I know I shared with you last week, but I want to recognize all of our teachers and support staff of the year. We're celebrating them this week, and we'll be recognizing our district support staff and teachers of the year next week with a surprise there. I want to give a shout out to Coach Burke and Coach Bobble, the Science Olympia. Two years, second time in three years, they've made nationals. And that's not an easy feat. The second, only one of two teams in Indiana, and that means they're in the top 60 nationwide. So nice job to that. Practices this week, competition Saturday. Yeah, so good luck to that. I want to spotlight all the retirees tonight. Congratulations on an outstanding career. Thank you for all your service to our students and our families and one another. I do want to give a special shout out to David Holt. Tonight is his last board meeting. David is retiring, and he told me that this is his 220th board meeting, I think consecutive. Is that right, Mr. Holt? 257. So we're gonna make that a record and see if anyone can beat it. But David, your impact for the last 20 more years on us as a district and a community cannot be put into words. You will be missed, and thank you for your leadership and your conservative financial wisdom.
So with that, we move on to board comments, and we will begin with Terry.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to be one of the first to say that it's still nice to see you all today. The board has been 350 for months. We're just trying to still remain in the main place and celebrate our retirees. Julie, I really love your message. Almost got me to tears because I know how hard everybody is working on behind the scenes and that they're not being heard. Thank you for bringing up your own staff and to the board.
Next, we have Howard.
I just want to say I too agree, Julie. That was very inspiring. Absolutely. Oh, and hello, folks. How y'all doing? Glad to see so many folks came out tonight. This is probably the largest crowd that I've seen since January, and it's really, really refreshing to see you all here. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, Howard. Julie?
I'm going to reiterate that as well. It's very nice seeing people out here with us. It's wonderful. And I just am gonna say the same thing I said before. Thank you all very much for everything you've done for our kids.
Thank you so much, Julie. LaShawna?
It is great to see all of our retirees. Thank you for your services. So Warren, I'm new to the school board, so sad to see you go, but I heard you have great accomplishments. And Julie, again, that was very inspirational. I would like to also bring the report from our Warren and Education Foundation for everyone involved. The tournament fundraiser is coming up. So get out there. And everybody who hasn't got any teams together, come out and enjoy us and come out so we can enjoy each other in an outside setting. I would like to also give a shout out to Mr. Russell and his high school team. I had a scholar that was struggling with some classes, and Mr. Russell pulled his whole team together, accommodated, mom scheduled, got that scholar back on track. And I just want to give a shout out. I know sometimes that our teachers go and our administrators go and recognize for the things that they do, but that scholar just needed a little boost and now he's back on track. So I appreciate that. And Mr. Dr. Hanson, I want you to know that the Warren Resource Center received some great acknowledgements during our Chama Informed Symposium today, all of what you're doing over here at Warren and as a pioneer of being diverse and now being to the community. So thank you for your service. Thank you for adding the Resource Center to Warren's families. It has not been unrecognized. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. Because it leaves me. I, it has just been a really busy month. I picked up flowers from the choir's flower sale and then started planting some of them. I attended a presentation done by the Ball State Urban Planning Department on revitalizing Washington Square, and that was, it was a really, really good presentation, and it was spearheaded by one of our own Warren Central graduates. Up until a couple of weeks ago, the most exciting thing was I got to referee robotics in person, which is something I had not done for 13 months. So that was absolutely wonderful. I attended what my son referred to as the best honor ceremony he has ever been to. We promised him he would be in and out in five minutes, and I think it was three. So great job. He was not thrilled. We made him change, but he was really happy with the ceremony. So thumbs up. I attended CCHA's annual legislative seminar, which is, I actually sat behind Ms. Griffin, and it's always one of my favorite PDs of the year. It's always very, very well done, as well as the ISBA Spring Membership Meeting. And then, as Dr. Hanson said, our Science Olympia team was somewhat surprised about three weeks ago to find out that we were invited to go to nationals. And so every single moment of my spare time has been spent with middle schoolers making sure that their physics, their second-year high school physics is doing really well. But we're just really, really grateful for the opportunity. Tomorrow, we're doing a slideshow that includes the Grand Canyon, which is what we would be seeing tomorrow if we were actually in Arizona. Like everyone else, I would really like to thank the retirees. It is absolutely wonderful seeing all of your faces out there. It's great to see people. That really cannot be overstated. So thank you all so much for coming and spending your evening with us. With that, I'm going to look back at Terry. I think I know the answer, but do we have any yellow cards? We do not. And so the highlight of the evening and to the thing we are all waiting for, Mr. Simpkins.
There we go. Next up, Debbie Cannon. She's our longtime benefits administrator. Thanks for always putting up with me there for a number of years. Shirley Dorsey, Sunny Heights Media Assistant. Thank you, Shirley, for always inviting me to be a guest reader at Sunny Heights. Always enjoy that. Susan Downey, I see you out there. High School Athletic Department. Thank you, Susan. Doris Ellington, Specialist here at the Central Ops. Retirement party continues. Thanks, Doris. Deana Estep, where's Deana? Custodian. Felicia Harrison, Lakeside Teacher. Shannon Hayden-Rike, Lowell Teacher. Otto Hildebrandt, Bus Driver. David Holt. Come back down. Joyce Jeffries, High School Instructional Assistant. Christine Kissner, Data Manager at the Career Center. Roger Coon, Bus Driver. Kathy Leganza, School Psychologist. Gloria Montcel, Hawthorne Special Ed Instructional Assistant. Paul Moon, Custodial Team Leader at the High School. Suzanne Ness, Media Assistant at the High School. Shelley Papalia, Grassley Creek Instructional Assistant. Stephen Paw, Custodian. There he is. Nice work. Thank you. Laura Ray, Bus Driver. All right. I actually got to drive a bus last Saturday at our recruitment fair, but I didn't have the students, and I wasn't negotiating a tight apartment complex or anything like that. So it's impressive what you guys do. Diane Rupert, Media Specialist at the High School. And I know she's enjoying life in North Carolina. Teresa Thompson, Bus Driver. Mike Tucker, Plumber. Susan Wharton-Berg, Raymond Park Teacher. Valerie Westling, Creston Instructional Assistant. There we go. All right, Steve West, Custodian. All right, Steve West, Custodian.
Thanks, Steve.
Marsha Wisman, Custodian at the High School. David Nguyen, Bus Driver. And finally, Diane York, Transportation Department, one of our full-time bus monitors. Once again, congratulations retirees. Have a good one. Oh, yes. Did I miss Terry Thompson? I apologize. Apparently, I, my glasses aren't working or something. Terry Thompson, Bus Driver, everyone. Thank you, Lynn. Oh, they're in the back. Thanks, retirees. And the boxes for your gifts are on the back table. If you're on your way out, you want to make sure you grab that. It has your name on it, so. All right, thank you very much.
As Mr. Simkins stated, that is 701 years of service to Warren Township, and we are forever grateful. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. This much this month. The Consent Agenda consists of the Approval of Minutes, the Financial Report, Payroll Claim, Financial Report, Claim Register and Electronic Payments, Financial Report, Year-to-Date Summary of Fund Balances, the Human Resources Report, Permission to Accept Gifts and Grants, and Change Orders, and most excitingly, and for the first time in 15 months, two field trips.
I would like to make the motion to second it. Doctor Consent Agenda.
Terry's Consent Agenda and Julie has seconded it. Under our new law, we are having roll call votes, which we've been doing anyway, but now we're really doing them. So I'm saying, I said you could call for a vote. And with that, because we did have a Human Resources Report, and because it is May, and with the May Human Resources Report, always comes a wonderful series of introductions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, Board. President Burke, Board Members, Community, it is my pleasure, as we recognize those who retired tonight, we do have to replace them. So thank you for your approval of our new CFO. So at this time, I would like to welcome Matt Parkinson to the podium. Matt, will you come forward, please? While Matt makes his way to the podium for a few statements, I want to recognize that we are bringing the Warrior back home. Matt is a proud graduate of Warren Central High School, 2006. He comes to us most recently from Danville, where he served as the CFO. And prior to that, he was with DLGF and KPMG, right? Get all those letters correct. So Matt, welcome to Warren. We're excited to have you here.
I'll just say very briefly that I'm thrilled to be back in Warren Township. It's really an honor. I can't think of a place I'd rather be, so I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
And we're excited to have you.
As most of us know, Mr. Holt was keeping down two jobs, being paid for one. The other part of the role that he occupied was our chief kind of operations. We're splitting that up this year going forward. So it's my pleasure to welcome Marcus Clayton to the podium. Marcus has been with us in Warren for some, quite some time. He was a successful social studies teacher, a successful assistant principal, and a very successful athletic director. And I have no doubt that he will be a successful Chief Operations Officer. Marcus, welcome.
That's my daughter right there. 2020 Warren Central graduate. Proud of her. And my son, Kobe. Raise your hand, Kobe. You can see the hair. They compensate for what I don't have, so glad my kids are here tonight. President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board, thank you for this special opportunity to work with the best cabinet, the best educational team, hardest-working team in the state of Indiana. I'm going to stop texting Dr. Hanson at 5:00 in the morning, telling him how excited I am to get started. Thanks to everyone that's reached out to me. I'd like to thank David Holt for all of his great work over the years, setting the standard here, tough shoes to fill, and thank you for not only being a mentor, but most importantly, a friend. And last but not least, I look forward to working with the great people in the areas of transportation, child nutrition, buildings and grounds of custodians, and the Warren Township Police. We're going to work together as a family unit daily until we become the best department in the state of Indiana. We're going to work hard towards that. So again, thank you for this special opportunity, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the Boarding Community, I too have several people I'd like to introduce to you guys tonight as new members of our Teaching and Learning Team here in Warren Township. Tonight, I'm going to start with Dr. Leandra Radford, if you'll make your way up. Dr. Radford actually started her career as an educator at an alternative school, and she's thrilled to be returning as to the alternative world as the new Director of Renaissance. She served as a teacher, Director of College and Career Readiness, and Assistant Principal, and she's currently serving as the Dean of Students at our very own Raymond Park Intermediate School. So just like to welcome Leandra to the team.
Thank you very much to the Board, to Dr. Hanson, to Mr. Russell. Thank you so much for the opportunity. There is a few people that I feel like I still need to say, even though they're not here tonight. I also want to thank Ms. Simba Taylor, who is the outgoing Director of Renaissance, for leaving such a strong program for me to build from. Dr. Klein is not here tonight, but he is the Principal of Raymond Park, where I currently serve, and I owe a lot of thanks to him for the training and the support and the skills that I've been able to gain at Raymond Park that would allow me to step into this role. And most importantly, I think, I want to thank my family for being here tonight in such large numbers. It is both humbling and exciting, and I would just say there is a vision for a new Renaissance, and I'm so excited to get started. There's lots of work to do, but for tonight, thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite Mrs. Allison Bodine. Allison has served at Warren Central High School for the past 16 years as a teacher. She is infamous for her top 10, now top 30 as Program Coordination. She's been an athletic coach, and she currently serves as the Mathematics Department Chair. First go on leadership of her under the reputation of being one of Warren Central's finest, so thank you.
Thank you. I started at Warren back in 2005, and this, from a little brand-new, I didn't know anything about anything, teacher to now, and I just, Warren is my family, and I'm so glad to be expanding my leadership role and continuing to serve Warren Township.
We've never done this before, but I'm going to, he's watching virtually, Andrew Holzbach. I think he is. If you are, hi, Andrew. So Andrew's a born Hoosier. He's actually coming back home from Tampa, Florida. Andrew started his career in Indiana and spent the last nine years in Florida. He currently serves as Assistant Principal at a large high school just outside of Tampa. He has classroom experience as a fifth-grade teacher and a high school English teacher, and Andrew will be our new Assistant Principal at Creston Intermediate Middle School. So thank you, Andrew. I'd like to invite Mr. Trent Bodine to the stage. Trent has served at Warren Central High School for the last 15 years as a teacher, athletic coach, and he currently serves as the Science Department Chair. He has served on an extensive list of both school and district committees, and we're excited to announce him as a new Assistant Principal at Warren Central.
15 years ago, I was fortunate enough to accept an opportunity to teach at Warren Central High School, and I was naive. I didn't know nothing really about Warren Central or Warren Township, coming from Chicago. And it's been one of the best decisions I've ever made in my entire life. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for the opportunity to continue to serve our students, our families, our township. It's going to be awesome. I'm just so very excited.
Nicole Simpson. Nicole served as Warren Central as a member of the Science Department for the last seven years. Her teaching expertise in both biology and bio med, the Project Lead the Way course, and in addition to being an experience as a biologist within the science industry. All of these things have prepared her to serve in her new role as the Coordinator for STEM and kindergarten, and grades kindergarten through eighth.
Hello, I am surprised. I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity.
And Amy Lorch. Full disclosure, I've teased Amy all day about how I was going to embarrass her up here. I'm not going to, but just the thought of that, I'm sure. Amy served in Warren Township as a teacher, reading interventionist, literacy and instructional coach, and most recently as an instructional specialist. She's been, served in Warren Township for the past 27 years. She's prepared to expand her role as a leader in the role of Coordinator for Literacy and Grades K through eighth.
Thank you very much. Like you said, I've been here 27 years. This is the only place I've taught, so I'm super excited to take this to the next level of leadership in reading instruction. Thank you.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board, I have a couple people I want to introduce. Although the positions themselves were already approved, now tonight we reveal officially titles and names. And so you can imagine my surprise that going into next year, we have aggressively expanded to an HR to further invest in our people. And so I couldn't be more thrilled that we are going to have two Deputy Human Resource Officers joining me in my office. And that would be Ms. Simba Taylor, who regrets that she can't be here tonight, but she will be over diversity, equity, and belonging. It's just appropriate that our statement happens to be behind me this evening because she will be instrumental in continuing to be the district leader in that area. But from an HR standpoint, Ms. Simba is going to be very, very active in recruitment and retention, as well as a lot of professional learning around the areas of diversity, equity, and belonging, and to continue our district mission and vision in that area. So I couldn't be more pleased that she's joining my team. And then also Pam Griffin is joining as a Deputy Human Resource Officer, and she's already, already. Okay. So Pam, step up and.
So if ever like somebody saw a job description and said, oh, this is the perfect job for me, that happened to me this year when I saw this opportunity. And then now listening to Marcus, like I'm, like, don't be upset when I say this team, but I'm like so ready for 2021, 2022 to start, like tomorrow. And I know we have to finish this year, but there is so much synergy and excitement and just like eagerness to build something really special for our staff. And I'm super excited to be working on the side of classified with Marcus because he's right. There's no reason why we shouldn't be the best in the state. And I think we're positioned. We have the right people in the right place, and we have a strategy. So now we just have to go and take it. And so I'm super excited about that, and thank you, Dr. Hanson and Board. Super appreciative, and like I said, so is Ms. Simba. Like I said, we're ready to do this, like.
Hey, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board. Ches Rosinuguko, if you want to come make your way to the front. As you know, we opened up the Morehead Community Resource Center this year and have really identified that we have such a big need in this district and looking to add to the team. Mr. Rosinuguko, Mr. R, as the kids call him, just could not be a better fit. He has been in Warren. Okay, so I have the LMSW, right? LCO, okay, there's. He is a licensed social worker and is going to fill a need in our district to really work with families, be proactive about, you know, identifying needs. Ches has been at Creston and at the high school, has been really active in our REACH training that we had many years ago and on our diversity equity team. And so we just couldn't be more thrilled to have him now impacting all of our kids and across all the schools in the district, so let's turn it over to you.
Thank you, Allison. And LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker. What that means, the state of Indiana authorizes me to be able to do mental health assessment, diagnosis, and counseling. So if you need to see me, or if you want me to see someone. But thank you very much, Dr. Hanson, Board, Central Office Administrators, my Warren Central family, Warren Central community. I just am looking forward to this opportunity to serve our community, our students and families in its manner. Transitioning from that Dean for Student Services, but a large part of that involves a lot of discipline, and in discipline, you can enhance because it's an opportunity to teach, but it's a lot of more attention there. The definition of social work, the profession of social work, is to enhance the interactions of individuals, groups, families, organizations, depending upon what your particular skill set. My particular skill set is mental health, family counseling, crisis intervention, system theory. And I'm hoping with that school set, I can serve our families, our students, our community in a manner that will enhance us so that we can continue in our tradition that we have here at Warren. So I'm looking forward to it, and thank you very much. On behalf of my daughter, Ms. Simba Rosinuguko, Rosinuguko Taylor, she says, thank you. She looks forward to being able to serve in this arena in a manner that is very crucial to the success of this district, dealing with equity, retention, staff development, so that we can deal with our students in a more culturally relevant way, but more importantly, understand ourselves in a more important culturally way so that we can deal with our students. So she looks forward to that, and she sends her gratitude and thanks. Awesome.
So you have to love May. We get to give the retirees the recognition they deserve and then our new employees the recognition they deserve. So we are so glad to have all of you in your new roles. Congratulations and welcome. With that, we are moving on to the in-person update.
Yeah, can you? President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight, I'm here to give, I don't want to say the final in-person update. It's not like in-person, but it's ever going to stop. But the fun of one of this academic school year, although really what my focus tonight will be on talking about the continuation of this academic school year into summer school and some additional opportunities we have for our students to continue to support them year round. Just want to link this back to board goals, obviously about offering high quality student program. So the graduates are prepared to compete in global society and continue to develop the Warren jog, support the whole child, provide instruction and support for the development of their social emotional wellbeing, ensure students are socially emotionally strong and maintain financial stability. Which needless to say, but I will say because of the emphasis on it applies to all five of our strategic plan focus areas. So tonight I want to provide just some reminders and then some additional information just about what summer learning, the summer learning outlook looks like for our students. Back in February, I came to you with a proposal for summer school K through 12. And at that time, I alluded to the fact that we had traditionally had summer school at our high school campus for quite a while. But it's been quite some time since we've embarked on the journey of having summer school for our K eight students. Just a refresh of that really on one slide, we have two K four summer school locations. Those will be Lakeside and Liberty Park. Those happen to also be identical times and dates as a 5-8, but June 7th through June 18th, 18th, that's 10 days. And that'll operate from 8:30 to 12:00 PM daily. As I just mentioned, 5-8 summer school will be at Raymond Park. And those times are the same as well. Summer school at the high school, just a little bit longer, obviously, in terms, those students are obviously working towards credit attainment. This year, the shift that we made is we actually have three periods instead of two. So students can be enrolled in all three periods to maximize their credit of payment opportunities. And then we have ongoing summer school and the reminder, June 7th through September 30th, September 30th is significant because that's the last day our current seniors have to meet graduation requirements to be officially counted as graduates for the 21 school or 2021 school year. So that involves night summer school. And as you recall, maybe I believe from a December presentation, we have hired staff specifically to link to students, especially with their online work and their credit attainment goals to be able to earn those credits that maybe they didn't have the opportunity to or failed to the first time to earn. So that will be ongoing through June 30th or through September 30th. And quite frankly, that's a 365 day thing. We don't end on September 30th. We will start obviously back on October 1st again. What does that look like? What I'm sharing here is current enrollment numbers. So specifically, we had initially targeted around 150 a grade level for that. This is how it breaks out. Now, these are confirmed enrollments, I will say. We have a lot that we're still trying to, I don't want to say trying to get into summer school, but working out a few details. I didn't do this in my head. I calculated this before I came, but that's 2,507 students that are currently on this list. So that's quite an operation this summer. That's bigger than a lot of Indiana school districts, right? In terms of what we're operating in the month of June. But certainly we know more than ever, the opportunity to learn in the summer is critical. It's critical for all students. But I'm happy to say that every student who wanted summer school and every parent who inquired about summer school, we were able to put in summer school to take advantage of that opportunity. And if someone calls me tonight, we will get them in summer school for that as well. We know also that summer school may not be an opportunity for every student, whether they're vacation or for whatever reason, summer school is just not in their pathway this summer. We've developed what we're referring to as summer strides, learning guides. And these will be, for lack of a better word, these are online resources, but also available in paper form that we'll be sending home with primarily our younger students, really specifically grades K through eight, to be able to have some structured learning activities that they can accomplish from home. So maybe the structure of summer school doesn't work for a family schedule for whatever reason. We still wanted to provide opportunities for those students to be able to take advantage of learning in a way that meets and provides link to the coherence of the curriculum and instruction that we provide. And again, it's just an additional opportunity for everyone who wants to take advantage of additional learning opportunities to do so. One additional highlight that I want to point out to is a few months ago, you approved Ed Minham contract for normally next school, for next school year. One thing that we're specifically targeting is a program called Accelerate the Ninth Grade. Every current eighth grade student will have the opportunity to take either or and accelerate the English nine or accelerate the Algebra I course through Ed Minham this summer. What that does is gives students the ability to be better prepared to take English nine and to take Algebra one in high school. But probably, I don't want to say more importantly, but just as important, it also gives those students an opportunity to earn a credit for those courses. So every eighth grade student has the opportunity to enter Warren Central High School with at least two credits. We've tried programs in the past, but obviously because of the, I don't say in-person requirements, when I say that, we think COVID. But we couldn't always offer summer school or credit bearing class to all 900 eighth graders every year. Now we can. We can. These students will be supported virtually through email, but with the rich content that's within Ed Minham, that certainly provides that support. Specifically, and just as important, for students who have, our eighth graders have been in a situation this year where they've been at school every other day and certainly had their application opportunities. This will also help fill some opportunity gaps that those students maybe experienced this year because they didn't get the same access to a teacher that they have in the past. We're excited to be able to announce that. And we're excited to be able to be able to provide that opportunity for our students this summer. So needless to say, there's a lot going on. We look forward on June 7th to welcoming at least 2,507 students back to our campuses. With all that that involves in the hundreds of teachers that that takes to that. So as you know, we recognized teachers last week for Teacher Appreciation Week. Needless to say, our teachers have been heroic this year and their efforts continue. And they will continue in June and they will continue in July, even though obviously that's, I don't want to say that's not well known, but their efforts are ongoing and forever. So excited to share those opportunities about our learning that'll take place this summer. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And now Pam Griffin, virtual update.
All right. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, distinguished board members and community members. Last virtual update, but also an update on assessment. Mr. Bodine, I may be asking you a question about I-Learn Biology ECA's here in a minute, but I think I know what the answer is. Again, just revisiting our board goal. Assessment helps us make sure that we have data sources so that we can improve teaching and learning. We know that in this year, it's been hard to capture some of those data sources, but all data is data and we can learn from it. As it relates to our strategic plan focus, we want to make sure that as we're investing in the future of our graduates, that we are using all of the tools that we have at our disposal so that we can ensure that our students are provided with every opportunity and option that we can make available to them. Last week, and I'll do a real quick summary, I brought to you all of the I-Learn tests that our students are would be participating in. And I'm glad to say that we have completed all of those successfully with our high school finishing this Friday. And a real quick snapshot there for you of all the different learning schedules and how we tried to accommodate all of that while meeting the needs of our virtual learning families, as well as our in-person hybrid students who are attending on alternate days while navigating quarantines, doctors' visits and just normal, just trying to make it through middle school and elementary. So I bring to you just in the areas of math and language arts, the completion rates for our K through eight campuses. When we talk with the other CTCs around the county, they are in shock when they hear our completion rates. This isn't a badge of honor. This isn't like an opportunity for us to say, oh, look at how good we are at bringing people in for assessments. But what this is a really good example of is how we plan and coordinate and work with our community to help meet their needs while also trying to capture these data points that help us inform our next steps. Again, me personally, do I think that we're going to get the very best data from this? I'm not sure. We won't know, but we will get some data. As my colleagues know, I've often said that I'm not very mathy. I'm an English teacher by trade with a Latin minor. But we did have 4,0856 students in grades three through eight take the I-Learn assessments. And as you guys know, I might share that these assessments could be anywhere from eight to 12 hours for our students. What that means is if we just think about the operational portion of math in language arts only, that was 19,424 tests. If you add in the practice test they're required for our students to take before they take the operational test, they were actually given 29,136 testing opportunities to complete. I share that and that doesn't even include science. Again, to let you know that with well-coordinated effort with the support of our parents and our caregivers, the do what it takes attitude of our students, as well as our students trusting us left to go along with it, we were able to accomplish these things. Lastly, as we end the year, I do want you to know that next Friday is not an academic enrichment day. It is a recognition and celebration day for our virtual families. And to be honest, the, the recognition and celebration starts before Friday. But I did wanted to share with you just a few of the invitations that have been going out to our families so that we can bring some closure to one of the most incredible years that we've experienced with one of the most incredible teaching opportunities that in my many years, I've never experienced. To try and make sure that we end this year in a very special and memorable way for our students. And so just another opportunity again to sing the praises of our virtual teachers, those that stepped up, those we asked to step up and those who voluntarily, you know, said, I meant it to win it. Let's see what we can do. This has been a arduous year, but as I often say to my friends, this is hard work. It is not hard work. It is the most grueling, most intensive work you'll ever do, but you will not receive a greater joy than what you receive knowing that your students have learned and they've really grown, having had you as a teacher for 180 days in the school year. So at this time, can I take any questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you so much for your time and for all of your updates over the past year. Okay, investing in the future of our graduates, Warren Central's year in review. Mr. Shetler. Who's bringing up backup?
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board. Gives me great privilege and pleasure to be here tonight and this opportunity to go over Warren Central's year in review and also a preview of what's coming next. So keeping on the forefront of everybody's mind, the school board goals and making sure that we are aligning what we are implementing is exactly that and making sure that we're on track with that, along with the, following along with the Warren, MSD Warren Strategic Plan, making sure again that we are on track with that as we go forward with our goals as a high school and career center. So the review of this past year, as Mrs. French stated earlier, it has definitely, it has definitely. It has definitely taken a village. Unprecedented times, we hear that constantly. But when we're talking about the way we had to start this school year, it's been like no other. And for so many people, as in the village, so many people, and again, yeah, I'm going to miss somebody. From our team at the high school to custodians, to secretaries, to coaches, to in the, in the cafeteria feeding our kids, to see them come back on that first day of school. And you could just see the fear in their eyes. Of course, that's all you saw with just the eyes, it seems like, but you could see them still smiling through their eyes. And that was huge to see because the adults, you know, we all got into this, into this profession for our kids, not to be sitting in front of a screen. I say that all the time, but it's so true. And, but our team just worked tirelessly to adjust and respond to all the COVID-19 protocols. We had a visit from Dr. McCormick, the State Superintendent, along with Representative Andre Carson, and most recently with the Indiana State Board of Health and got glowing reviews from all of them. The State Board of Health came in because we had a number of close contacts. It was two weeks after spring break and that's the reason why. We were able to track everything down and there hasn't been a student to student contact. So that is critical there. And that's very important to make sure we stress to everyone, they're, they're getting, they're getting this out in the community and then they're bringing it to school, but it hasn't been from student to student within the school because of all these protocols and response that we have, have, have put in place. Again, the implementation of the safe reopening plan, the mask management. And the kids were great with masks. It was trying to educate the adults. But we got them on board. But the mask management outstanding, the contact tracing, the signage and classroom configuration, if you've been to the high school and the career center, you, you noticed all those yellow lines and all those signs everywhere, you know, walk this way. You see the, the, the big traffic circle in the middle of the commons, making sure we have that flow going around. So they're not congregating. Kids have done a wonderful job with that. The social distance in the cafeteria, it was almost eerie because, you know, normally we have 600 in a cafeteria at a time. And we have two cafeterias and we feed 3,700 students in an hour and a half. But when we took that down, we cut it in half and then you took your virtual students out. I mean, it was eerie. It was almost like you wanted them to talk louder. But they did a wonderful job with that. The master schedule adjustments, unbelievable how many schedule changes have been made in order to accommodate our kids, whether virtual, hybrid, whatever we needed to do to make sure that we are adjusting their, their schedules to, to meet their needs. You know, is Marcus Clayton still here? Yes. What we've done with the, the, being able to continue with extracurricular activities with Ed Meckus in the Performing Arts Department to Marcus Clayton in the Athletic Department, it has been phenomenal. We've not had to shut down any program. it has been phenomenal. We've not had to shut down any program, and we're able to just continue on because of what they have done there, meeting the students and families where they are. With that student and family connections, we know that we needed to see our kids, we needed to see our families, and we did that in different ways. And a lot of these, we're going to continue with even after the pandemic. But also have that in person as well. But the socially-distanced ninth grade onboarding experience we held in the on the football stadium, and we did that with our incoming freshmen, the virtual materials distribution where those kids that did not come in at all for class, we set up the tents and had them come in and get their materials and to go over that with them. And the virtual learning webinar that we held with not only students but the families, the virtual cohort parent meetings, the academic success, the tips and tricks that our academic coaches sent out to all of their students in their cohort. You've heard about the WOW visits where the Warren on Wheels, we took the took the show to them, and we were able to continue with the Chrome or jumping down there to the Chromebook and hotspot supports. We had we had the Chromebooks ready to go. We had all the technology in that in those those white buses, and we were able to, you know, to take food, thanks to ChartWells and our technology people were able to take care of those two issues if they had any of those issues. We had virtual annual case review meetings, family Zoom meetings, and weekly cohort newsletters that that went out. Academic supports, they continued, and they just we were here, whether they liked it or not, we were answering those calls at at home if they had questions with Apex because we had a number of Apex support specialists helping especially our seniors. And so we had the Learning Hubs, both virtual and in-person. The after-school tutoring program, we continued all throughout the year and continue to do so. The Gear Up Support, that is a tutoring program that is set up through Purdue that started with our actually started in the eighth grade, and it's now to our junior class, that they are assisting with not only just juniors, but also all students if you show up. Our academic coaches again went above and beyond in every way possible. And like I said, around-the-clock support, around-the-clock support, we had teachers literally, you know, because our students, sometimes they don't run on the, you know, the seven to the three, you know, they're they're doing their work sometimes at 10, 11 o'clock at night because they're doing other things. They're, you know, watching their siblings, they're working, they're doing other things. But our teachers stepped up and met them where they were then. The, like I mentioned, the academic support specialists, they mainly focus with our seniors, but we had about a dozen or so teachers that have have picked up where the kids are on Apex, trying to earn those credits, and they basically adopted about a dozen kids, dozen seniors to try to get them through and get them across that finish line. Super Saturdays, that's where we have our kids coming in sometimes with their families for extra support that our cohorts implemented. Our intercession camps, we on both with the fall and also spring, our cohorts got together and, you know, again, made it possible so that they could come in and get assistance whenever needed. The virtual pods for our students on virtual, they're they were given the opportunity at Morehead Community Resource Center to come in and get assistance in person if need be, and our academic coaches have gone there to to assist. And as Mr. Russell mentioned, expanded summer school opportunities. We have, it'll probably be around 14 to 1,500 students, high school alone, that are going to take advantage of our high school summer school this year, which is huge. And the summer supports, again, Mr. Russell mentioned those that will be continuing on from June 7th all the way through September 30th and and beyond, but September 30th is that is that very important day. We, again, Dr. Hanson mentioned in the beginning about our student recognition of our senior top 30. That was a wonderful program that we were able to, you know, recognize so many other students. And I also said, you know, to be able to have our students recognize so many other teachers, you know, sometimes those those 10, those top 10 students are picking the same teachers year after year after year if they're in in the top 10. But now we had a top 30 that we're able to really branch out and get a lot more teachers that need to be recognized as well. We've been able to continue with the monthly senior set of good examples. Sometimes we've had to go to their house and present it to them on their, you know, front lawn. Sometimes in school, in our TV studio, we're able to do that. But again, being able to recognize those students, very, very important. The we're continue to recognize those set of good example award winners, even though we're not able to get over to to the Marriott to do that in person, but we are continuing to recognize those through social media. And then also the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade top 20 that we're recognizing as well. The annual honors program, which Ms. Burke stated that, and I heard that from a number of parents saying this is the best honor program, honors program ever. Because again, it was, you talk about personalized, boom, you know, we're bringing in the family right there in front. We were able to and, you know, honor those kids right there. It was it was outstanding. We honored over 100 of those, 100 of our students then. Our Warren Career Center, our Walker Career Center is went went around from class to class to recognize all their students in their honor roll program. And they're, I believe, are still doing it, or they just finished up today, I think. The Performing Arts Awards and also athletic awards, that's ongoing. They've had banquets that have been socially distant, no food, but we were able to you know, get those students honored as well. And then the the big thing here, and I want to say this because this senior class, obviously, they've missed out on so many things. And you know, to accomplish that, scholarships over $15 million, that is incredible, what they are able to continue to do and be so resilient in their progress through, you know, through their Warren career is just amazing. And this past today and yesterday, we are able to get back to some sense of normalcy with our senior luncheon in the fieldhouse, which was outstanding. The kids looked great. They really appreciated it. But just to see their faces all together in one setting, I mean, it gives you chills just even thinking about it. Okay. Did I skip one? Yeah, there you, there we go. Okay, yes. I can't thank the board enough, as well as central office enough for all the things that they have done for that you guys have done for our staff in teacher appreciation, because again, this has been like no other, like I said, but what what happened last week was just truly amazing. I greatly, greatly appreciate it. I want to make note of a couple things. We are, we want to congratulate and congratulate Nicole Simpson. Is Nicole still here? Okay, Nicole Simpson was here because I believe Brian Simkins had her come up. And then she's our teacher of the year. She's done a fabulous job. And then Master Sergeant Little, who runs our ROTC program, will support staff of the year, along with Sarah Wilcox, who is the assistant to the associate principal there in the main office. They do a fabulous job, but when I said Nicole Simpson and Brian called her up because she has another position, Dr. Hanson called Marcus Clayton up, and he has another position. If you could please take note of that. And then Allison Woods called Chaz Ruzinaguko up. So we're down three right now, big three. And that's that's a huge hit. But again, I congratulate them and I really look forward to working with them in another position. Student, no, no. Okay, all right. So looking forward to the 2122 school year, we have a new mission statement at Warren Central Walker Career Center. And we want to make sure that, again, it's in line with the districts, as well as in line with all of the board goals. So Warren Central High School Walker Career Center provides a safe, equitable, and high-quality learning environment that delivers exceptional experiences built upon high expectations, partnered with strong support structures and meaningful relationships to prepare students for post-secondary education, educational and career pathways. So with that, and focusing on our district mission statement and also making sure that we are investing in people, which the addition of two assistant principals, and we have them here in front, Trent and Allison, that they will be able to support department chairs with teaching and learning and instruction. And I can't thank you enough for giving us that support because that is huge. We are going to be able to hit those classrooms and hit them hard to make sure that that instruction is delivered appropriately. And then the addition of four school counselors, investing in the whole needs or in the needs of the whole child. We haven't had been able to have the time to really dig deep and, you know, assist our students like we like we know we need to because of the time element. You know, having such large caseloads, but now with the addition of four extra school counselors will be huge to invest in, you know, in the needs of the whole child. And again, this is all in the strategic plan, the invest in people. Dedicated staff to the Warren Online Academy. And with that, it will allow our teachers to focus on the in-person instruction instead of, you know, having to do both because that has been a real, real challenge to be, you know, a virtual slash in-person, and that's that's just a very difficult task, but that will be so beneficial to us. Addition of the health sciences teacher at the Walker Career Center, and that'll support another graduation pathway, which will be huge for our students. I will also be having a that will meet quarterly, a teacher advisory group, so I can get the pulse of, you know, what's happening throughout the building. And also with other various teacher committees will be set up as well. I mentioned invest in meeting the needs of the whole child. Where we're going to have, I'm going to have a student advisory group, again, getting the pulse from the students. Bringing back the student leadership retreat that we had at Camp Belzer for years and years and years. We haven't been able to do that this past year, but we want to get back to that, focusing on the jog skills. SEL and digital citizenship curriculum that we're going to have a teacher committee with that. The addition of the four school counselors, again, I talked about that a little bit, about proactive approach and small group interventions, which we haven't been able to do. We haven't been able to do for quite some time. We have a new media specialist that she's real excited to get the maker space. That's where able to keep, you know, students are able to come in there and and basically, you know, find out, you know, other avenues that, you know, you know, I think of robotics a lot with, you know, kids are, you know, are talented with their hands and and their minds to be able to put things together, make they're they're going to have that opportunity to do their do that in the maker space and the mediaplex. And then, again, academic excellence, making sure that we're recognizing students. And also with Chaz going over, along with James Taylor and everybody over there at MCRC, you know, the wraparound service is huge for our kids because we want to keep all of them on track. Okay, invest in families and community. I'm also going to have a parent advisory group that will meet quarterly. And so again, getting the pulse on what what's coming in, in, you know, from the community, what their needs, you know, and what how we can assist each other. The Gear Up, like I mentioned earlier, that's from Purdue, they're going to have a new position that will have a we will have a family and community liaison that will assist us in, again, making that bridging that gap, making that connection with our families and community. This this coming summer in July, I know Trent will be working with the freshmen, and we're going to have our student family onboarding for our freshman class, and we'll have a number of opportunities to meet with our with our students as well as our families. And then I know that we're wanting to do this, you know, all online, but I really feel at the high school, we want to meet face to face, get our get our kids and our families in because we have a lot of things to do at student registration and certain type of onboarding events from getting your ID to making sure you get your lunch pin, all that transportation, everything like that taken care of. So we're going to have dates and times for our 10th through 12th grade students to come in and and register. Quarterly parent meetings that will be focused on the cohort parent meetings, FASPA, college application, ninth APE dual credit, post-secondary planning, and then also with the improved parent communication so that everybody's on the same page, working with the same model here, the parent square. So looking forward to that as well. Invest in the future of our graduates. Every course, it's just going to be just like the college, you know, when you go into a college, first thing that you're going to receive, college is a syllabus for that class, so you know exactly what's coming up, how much is, you know, what's weighted, what's not, you know, what you need to do to be successful. So every course will have a syllabus. And that's building wide, high school and career center, and there will be a template for that. So every student will receive one for each class. Also, the journey of a graduate badging system focusing on the six areas that we are going to have our students earning badges, badges, basically, for meeting each of those six areas of the jog. So we will be, it'll be a tracking system so that we can recognize more than just, you know, a couple of students. We want to make sure we're recognizing all of our students all the time, and our teachers will have that opportunity as well because they're going to have some of these. But every administrator is going to have these. I'm going to hand these out to you so you can use these as well. But it'll be, you know, just a quick note, you circle what they, you know, were able to, you know, accomplish during that class period, whether, you know, it's communication, resilience or what. They circle it and they make a quick little note and hand it to the hand it to the teacher. Or the student, if the teacher's saying those. Those are the jog walkthroughs that will be going will be going on as well. The Senior College and Career Day that will happen at the same time, the PSAT testing and the HBCU, the historically black college and university college fair. It's not going to be just one particular night or one particular week, but we're going to have year-round activities, and we're working with our teacher leaders on that as well. And then also bringing back our Walker Career Center College and Career Fest. Again, investing in the future of our graduates. As you know, the PSAT or the SAT is taking over for the standardized tests, and it's going to happen this coming year where the PSAT will be testing grades nine through 11. And we're going to use that data to drive instruction, to inform instruction, and then also being able to plug in with the And then also being able to plug in with the Khan Academy in order to, you know, if there's a deficiency, to be able to link them up with the Khan Academy. So we're going to be doing the PSAT through grades nine through, nine through 11. And then the new SAT accountability exam will be at the junior level. It'll be second semester of their junior year. And gear up, again, will be assisting with our professional development for our teachers this summer. There are going to be two sessions that they'll be able to, to get into for professional development. And they'll be assisting that for this summer so that our teachers know what to, you know, to help their students out in preparing for the SAT. And again, we'll be embedding in, in math and English classes to practice for the SAT as well. Like I said, administered to juniors on, in the second semester. And this can be used as a graduation pathway if they pass this test. Now, they only have to take the SAT one time because there won't be any retest opportunities. And it's basically, it's, it's a little less than four hours, one day, that's it. So it's not a week time, you know, a week's worth of time. So it's one day, their junior year, second semester. And there won't be an essay portion as well. And like I said, it may be used for college entrance requirements. Now, the next couple, two, three, four slides. This has been, this has really been something I've, I've wanted to see increase. And I am really, really glad to see that our African-American students, if you look at this pie chart, you look at the red. This right here is the, this year's freshman, okay? And as you can see, we're looking at geography, history of the world Excel classes. We have 25.6% of our African-American students in there right now in that Excel world, world history. And the incoming freshmen already, as you can see, our minority students, our African-American students were at 36.9%. I want to continue to see increases in that, in our Excel classes. And so geography, history of the world, English 9X, as you can see, the jump from 28% African-American students to 40.8% in English 9XL. Geometry XL, 28%. This coming, this coming in freshman class, 44.7%. Biology XL, 29.7. And then this, this class coming into us, 38.1. And so I, I want to close by talking about, again, our strategic plan in regards to invest in efficiencies. The ninth and 10th grade will be receiving new Chromebooks, which will be wonderful. The implementation and, you know, the streamlining of, you know, connecting with our families through parent square. And then also if you, if you've been by the high school at all, you, you know what's going on there from every direction, from the south side to the new bus lot, to the new, on the west side. I mean, that's all going to be shut down here come June, June 9th. Because they're, they're going to have a lot of just construction going on all over. This is the new entrance. This is door 25 there on the packed loop that they've took, you know, taken out that wall. They're going to be bumping that out. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be first class. I mean, it really is. And they're just working their way around the school. So the facilities and updates and improvements are just second to none. And I'm just so, you know, excited to see that, you know, up and running. I know our, our performing arts, that was one of the first projects, our performing arts area has been, it's just about, it's about 97% completed. But they are just thrilled with what's going on in there and, and how everything is, is looking. And, you know, it sounds beautiful and it just looks beautiful. So, so investing in efficiencies, I think we're definitely doing that as well. So at this time, before I hand out your notepads for Journey of a Graduate, I will gladly take any questions if you have them.
Look, I, I just wanted to add, I know we have a lot of emerging boards. How are you going to solicit those parents so we can make sure that the board is diverse and serving how it wants? So have you thought of or developed plans to be able to get a more diverse group of parents involved?
Thank you for saying, yes. And Ms. Tribble, I can't wait to call on you to help me out with that. And I truly mean that. But yes, that, that, that's a must. I mean, we have to have parents that look like our kids. I mean, truly. So, I mean, we're going to be strategically making sure that that happens. And I will be calling on you to, to assist with that, please. Thank you. I know you are. I know you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. For our graduates, those that, I know we have a deadline to set to be ready. So for those of our sophomores who are on ATX primary.
Yes.
With summer school in, those courses will close out the rates because of switching. And are those paying, will that be paying all these?
See, those will continue.
That's amazing.
Yes, yes, yes. And also there will be a graduation for those individuals as well.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you so much for your time tonight. Terry, have we had any green cards come in?
No, we have not.
We have not. So before I start calling on y'all for policies, thank you so much. I just wanted to state that I'm going to have you all present and then we're going to do items 10-1 and through 10-7. So not you, Allison, as a group vote, since we have to do a roll call vote. So that is the plan. And so if we could please begin with Kim Howard.
Thank you, President Burke and Dr. Hanson and members of the board. Last month I brought policy 8450, the control of casual contact communicable diseases to the board for a discussion to update the list of those communicable diseases to include the 2019 novel coronavirus. I am now seeking for approval from the school board to add the coronavirus to the list. Absolutely, absolutely.
Last month I brought to you for discussion, policy 2700. Essentially, this policy allows us to either post the entire annual performance report or we can publish a portion or a summary of that report. Also, it just makes clear the corporation's responsibility to providing it available to our public via our website.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. Mr. Senkens.
Yes, last month I brought before you for approval, policy 8390, animals on school corporation property. That further defined policies surrounding emotional support animal and therapy dog. And has revisions related to stipulations regarding whether and to what extent the superintendent can approve, in particular, well, both of those groups of animals on campus or on school property grounds, as well as stipulations related to whether and to what extent those animals can also be on our transportation. I also brought before you policy 8800, religious patriarchs, ceremonies and observances. Specifically, that added a revision that says, it's a key addition specifically related to the option for a school district to place a durable poster, framed picture of the national model and God we trust and an accurate representation of the US and Indiana flags positioned under said national motto in each library or classroom if so desired. And there's administrative guidelines related to the dimensions of those, of that poster and whatnot. So let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. And that gives us Mr. Holt with his final set of policy scores.
Thank you, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Last month, I brought to you three policies that were to be updated, one actually new policy. Policy 6105 is a kind of an update in language with COVID this past year. There were some opportunities to amend language and increase some of our electronic signature process and actually change the board policy from facsimile signature to electronic signature. So that is just a, really an update in language. Second policy, 6250 is actually a brand new policy that just outlines the requirements that the school corporation has in determining fall and spring ADM enrollment. And then the last one is policy 6114, which is based on federal grants and make sure that it's updating language to make sure that the, the school corporation is following approved budgets and not actually appropriating or allocating expenses prior to getting an award ladder. Sometimes it is lengthy to get some of those federal awards, but it is just outlines that we cannot spend past the maturity of the grant period and, and cannot spend before we get an award ladder. Be happy to answer.
Thank you so much. So can I have a motion for items 10-1 through 10-7? Okay, LaShawna made the motion. Do I have a second? Julie seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Terry, could you call a vote, please?
Howard. Rachel.
Yes.
Julie. LaShawna. Myself. They passed.
And they passed unanimously. Thank you so much. And with that, we will go to item 10.08, the student success handbook. And Ms. Woods.
You're okay. Okay, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I brought this to you last month, an update for our student success handbook for the 2122 school year. I want to highlight just some changes since I was up here last month that we've made some updates based on both for board feedback and then we did get, I had our attorneys review it. They gave very minimal, what, what you'll see in there for the changes are just words. The addition of an Indiana code number, sorry. So that was not significant, but based on some board, board feedback, I want to highlight a couple of different areas. So the first is, so watch your eyes. On our student rights and responsibilities, we did add two areas here. These two bullets, all students have the right to feel safe and the right to report feeling unsafe. And also, students have the right to remove themselves from a situation where they feel unsafe and seek support from a trusted adult. We felt that it was really important to make sure that we state that and that a school should be a place that students feel safe. And if not, they need to let somebody know so we can help support them with that. On later on, which I'm not going to go to this one, it talks about the different social emotional curriculums at the different levels. That one says TBD for the high school and we are meeting with the high school as Rich talked about. And we're actually meeting tomorrow, I think. And we'll have, hopefully by the end of next week, a social emotional curriculum identified for the high school. So once we know what that is, we're, we have between, I think, two kind of finalists right now. We will output that in there and update you on, on what they decided for that. The other area is, so we removed the language about self-defense. You know, in, in the time that we are now and self-defense is, we added it a few years ago for the purpose of trying to define, you know, when, when different situation happens, when students have the ability to step away or walk away. Or it was really more from a parent standpoint that we added it in because parents would say every situation, oh, it's self-defense. Well, some things are self-defense, right? But we wanted to really make a statement of that we look at every discipline situation individually. So you'll see in this area where we talk about response to student behaviors. We've added this paragraph here, I'm going to read it. That just says, "All behavior incidents that involve more than one student and warrant a school administrator to assign a consequence will be fully investigated with a focus on each individual student and the unique circumstances and interactions that led to that incident. Often, an event has many underlying layers that contribute to it, each of which are unique to each student's needs and experiences. School administrators will look at the students involved individually and the need to assign a consequence and support will be based on that student's needs, behavior and factors that contributed to that incident." You know, really, as we are investing in meeting the needs of the whole child, we have to look at each individual student and each situation and the surrounding factors. And that looks different even though it may be one behavior incident, one fight or one argument or one incident that involves multiple students. But, you know, may have different outcomes and different supports and consequences assigned, you know, because of that investigation and us looking at the students individually. So that was added as well. The other area that we added was just in the grievance procedures. This was an updated, which, it's really hard to look at it in this tiny little sidebar. That's drugs. Previously, this stated that if, if parents have a concern or students have a concern with anything, how incident was handled, any support, that they could, they should be contacting any one of many people, including the school board, the superintendent. We really wanted to put in here kind of the order that people should be contacting. That they should be first contacting the child's teacher if that isn't resolved, or maybe not the best person to contact the school administrator, building principal. And then they can reach out to Ryan Wright here at central office to help support if they feel like they still have some concerns. So just trying to bring it back to the school who really has the most immediate information at that time and may be able to answer questions and alleviate concerns in an efficient manner for families. So, you know, just to remind you, the reason that, that we made the changes this year, we used really an equity lens when looking through this, trying to decriminalize, make our language more family-friendly. And also age-appropriate for our students. So that's really was our goal this year. And I'm happy to take any other questions before you guys vote on this tonight.
Allison, I do have one question. In your language where each incident, when you look at, and which is some of this language, right? But as we see the biases, maybe that's good, the incident is turning up. So in our diversity training, warranty will also be important, the opportunities are adding to the larger house not, as you're talking about, systemic racism, criminalizing, be able to remove those biases into a check the situation, justice, which is black, one of that individual essence.
Yeah, so we're handling that. Yeah. So we're handling that in, a, a number of different ways, both with, um, trainings, you know, ongoing conversation and professional development. Um, I know that, um, Ryan and I are working through creating a, for when things get more serious and you're looking at removing students for expulsion or removing because of behavior to virtual, you know, some of those bigger disciplinary things that, um, really there's going to be a more in-depth process in, in that. What's the history? Looking not just at that incident, but again, that student over time and, you know, and also trying to make it so people aren't making decisions in the emotional moment. So the conversation I've had with the deans and APs has been, um, you know, when I talk to somebody the day of a behavior incident, how they want to handle that and respond to that is usually very different than how they want to respond 24 to 48 hours later. When you have some time and space, when the energy and excitement of that moment has dissipated, we can get input from others. Um, we can, you know, get some feedback, get some time and space and usually make better decisions. We are also having, um, restorative practices training for all of our principals and deans and APs, um, in July. So to start off the school year, trying to build some more skills on what else can we do to help alleviate some situations, both students to students, students to staff, um, families and students and families in school. Um, so trying to really build a good network of people in the building so they can handle, you know, those small disagreements on the playground all the way to, you know, a bigger event that needs to have somebody outside that situation come in and facilitate that, um, restorative conference. So, um, we're handling it, I guess, from a, a number of different ways. Hopefully that answers your question.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no other questions, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Julie French and it is moved by LaShawna Triplet. Is there any discussion? Hearing, Terry, if you could call a vote.
Howard. Rachel.
Yes.
Julie. LaShawna.
Yes.
Myself, yes. You may have passed this.
Okay, so we have next year's student success handbook. Thank you so much. So the next item on our agenda is, um, and, uh, bylaw amendment. Um, it is bylaw, um, 0167.1. So if you remember back to February of 2020, also known as roughly a thousand years ago, um, we did not have the legal right to meet virtually. Uh, in fact, no elected board in the state of Indiana did. Once the governor made his declaration of disaster, um, that afforded school boards, legislature, other groups, the right to meet virtually. This year in legislative session, through House Bill 1437, the legislature, um, did two things. First of all, they clearly defined what a board, any elected board, not just a school board, can and cannot do while there is a current, um, declaration of urgency. So that could be on the state or the local level. And they also defined, um, gave all boards the ability to meet virtually when there is not a disaster declaration under various specific circumstances. Um, and as long as there was a policy in place. So, um, that is what this policy is. It, um, inserts language into our bylaws that allow for electronic meeting participation and voting by board members, um, when disaster is not ongoing. Um, they, the long and the short of it is that a board member must attend 50% of board meetings in person. A board member only attend two meetings in a row virtually. And then they must attend a meeting in person before they can attend another meeting virtually. And we must have a quorum present in the boardroom and, um, that you have to be able to see and hear. So it can't just be a telephonic meeting. And those are all of the criteria that are set by state law. So we cannot expand upon this. We, this is as far as we can go. We can, as a board, choose to draw back, but this is as far as we can go. And, no, cannot. You have to be able to both see and hear your fellow board members. Now, along with that comes a responsibility to things, um, as Terry has had to do today. Any board vote that is taken while any member is virtual or during a disaster has to be taken via a roll call. And I will say that the governor did remove the open door, um, correction, not corrections, but the, the accommodations he had made immediately upon passage of this bill, um, which is the reason that we had to start that tonight. And so, um, that does require an oral roll call vote. We couldn't even do board docs and just post the results. It does have to be an oral vote. Um, and also that if we have anyone meeting virtually, so if we had had a board member meet virtually, then we are required to give the public the ability to also participate in the meeting virtually, which we have been doing as a, a matter of course, that when we've had a virtual meeting, um, Dennis has magically made it go out the event though. Um, and that would have to continue as well. Um, so if we were to have a board session, a work session or a board meeting where we, where any member met virtually, then it would also have to go out. So it's, we're all in person and then our guests would have to be in person if we made that choice, which is probably not the wisest choice, but that's me talking, sorry. Um, but if we have any board member on virtually, we're required to allow the public to attend virtually as well.
What about if, um, all the board members are present? Does this provision, um, not allow us to still be able to make it public?
No, we, we can still choose to send it out. And I do believe we are working with technology to make sure that continues because obviously that makes meetings more accessible to the public. It just means we would not have the legal obligation to send it out. Um, and there's some, that part of the bill is kind of iffy in a couple of different ways as to what participation means and, but we are taking a very conservative, definitely following the different interpretations approach within the policy. So if you have any questions or concerns, um, feel free to contact me, oddly enough, about that. And we will, um, be voting on that next month. Oh, so with that, we are at closing comments and I will begin with LaShawna.
So, giving me another one tonight. Thank you for taking that time out. I just want to say this is a great evening. I know most of you tired of the phone. Welcome to the faces and the positions we all lack of ancestors. I'm glad you got the position that was just favoring you. That means you kind of wake up every morning wanting to come to work and do your job. So everyone stay safe and have a safe, wonderful evening.
Thank you, LaShawna. Julie?
Um, I'm just going to say, uh, thank you all for coming and have a great evening.
Thank you, Julie. Howard?
Yeah, I too want to say thanks, uh, for everybody for being here. Uh, congrats to the, uh, the retirees. Uh, I want to someday grow up to be like you. I, I want to particularly point out, uh, Mr. Sheplers', uh, presentation. Uh, it was, it was really good. Uh, gave me a good understanding of what the, what the high school is, is doing now. And, you know, that student recognition, you just can't, you just can't say enough about, uh, how much is being done to, to recognize those, uh, those quality and good students, uh, which helps motivate them and, and, and get them moving forward. Uh, teacher appreciation effort, I thought that was outstanding, uh, the things that he did. And, and also the new, uh, the new mission statement for the, uh, Warren Central High School and the Walker Career Center. Uh, I've, I thought that hit the mark, uh, and I was impressed with, uh, that, that language of that and, and what that meant to me. Two additional assistant principals and four, uh, school counselors, uh, a real strong team, okay? Um, that's going to help you move forward and, and, and continue to be, uh, more successful than you have been. I would also like to congratulate, uh, all the, all the new hires and, and their new jobs and, and that. Uh, again, I, I just feel like we, we, we're getting stronger, uh, and, and getting better uh, with their, uh, their acquisition and their movement around in those positions. So, and also the program under investment, uh, investment in, in need of the, the whole child. Uh, that's, that's going to, that's going to, that's going to pay big dividends for us. And, uh, I'm just looking forward to, uh, as we move forward, how, how great we will rise. And, uh, and I'd like to also, uh, commend our leader, uh, Tim, Dr. Tim Hanson for, uh, his, uh, his stalwart, uh, efforts at moving us forward as well. That's pretty much all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Howard. Terry?
Well, between LaShawna and Howard, I think everything's been taken that I want to say. But you guys said it very well. Congratulations to everyone. Um, you know, I know we have summer break coming along, but I just hope everyone finishes strong. And congratulations to all of our graduating seniors, all the teachers that pushed them, the families that pushed them. $15 million in scholarships. That's fabulous.
Thank you, Terry. Um, I would just like to start by thanking Allison for all of her hard work on the, um, student handbook and, um, for listening to all, uh, the suggestions. It's truly appreciated. Um, I would like to thank Rich because coordinating field trip across three schools, um, is a fun time. So thank you so much for everything. Um, I have always said that December and May are my favorite meetings. December, in a non-pandemic year, we usually have a bunch of students from fall sports, um, come through as well as other, um, recognitions. And it's usually a meeting that goes really, really late, but is always just wonderful to see because of all the students. Of course, we didn't really get that this year. Um, and so it was really good to have May be a little back to where it should be. We, we had the retirees and we also had all of the new hires, um, to begin replacing the retirees. And Rich, I know you're just sitting out there waiting, but you, you still have June and July. It'll be okay. We can get you new people before then. July is always a fun meeting too, because the HR sheet is just pop full of new people. So thanks to everyone. I know that, um, we are all really, really looking forward to graduation. The first set of graduation days that are coming up in early June. Um, seeing those kids walk across the stage. I know it was really meaningful last year and I'm looking forward to it again this year. To all of our teachers and administrators, um, and just everyone else. We, we have almost made it through this, this year, um, with everything and all of the challenges it has brought us. Um, I, I don't want to start listing groups off because I know I will miss them. Um, most of the department heads are here, but everyone has been involved in keeping our students safe and educated. And we are just so very, very grateful. So thank you so much. Have an excellent summer. That is right. Um, I apologize. I meant to say that earlier. Gloria Williams was unable to attend tonight. Her husband is in the hospital, so if you can keep him in your thoughts. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.